Good evening and welcome. It's nice to see some smiling faces in the audience tonight. So I'd like to call our regular meeting to order for June 24th, June 24th, 2021, at the Citrus Heights City Council. And Mr. Daniels, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the public will. One nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Here.
And Mayor Miller.
Here.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. I'm sorry, I'm just, we have some technical difficulties with the... Let me continue, I'm gonna go check some.
Okay. Well, she checks on that, let's take care of the next item, which is approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we consider moving item number 16 up to following the consent calendar?
Six.
I don't know, you might have speakers on that one.
Oh.
And it looks like it's gonna be pretty late.
You know, I look for that stuff, and it was like, trying to decide who goes first, who goes last is always difficult, but I don't have a problem with that, so 16 after consent. And then we'll go back.
Hold on a second.
There's a motion approved by Daniels. 15 after the consent.
I only go to 15.
I'll second that.
Oh.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. So I'm gonna take the roll.
Aye.
Bruins?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
And I'm an aye too, so the agenda's approved and we'll take 16 right off the consent calendar. All right, well, let's kick it off with comments by council members and regional board updates. Let's start with Mr. Schaefer.
Great, thanks Mayor. So, the Library Ward met on the 14th, really not a lot to report, other than labor negotiations there seem to be going well. And I just wanted to kind of let the folks know that if anyone is not vaccinated and they're interested in being vaccinated, if you're 12 years or older, there's a free vaccination clinic at Oakmontafero, Madison and Kenneth, across from Belvista High School, July 15th, and July, and August 5th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. If you want to make a reservation, you can call 916-633-1001. That is completely free of charge. That's all I had.
Thank you, Tim. Councilmember Bruins.
Thank you. I have had no regional meetings since our last council meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Those are the best reports sometimes. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you. First thing is, it's incredibly wonderful to look out and have an audience. It's been forever, and so, those of you that are here, thank you for being here, and hopefully we'll see that grow. And it's, so it's just very nice to see the public back in the process, too, in person. The only other thing is, July 4th is coming up. I encourage everybody to celebrate, and celebrate with a really good time, fun time, and, and just be considerate. We're gonna talk about fireworks later, but just be considerate, that there are other people in the world, and it's on a Sunday, and so some people are gonna have to get up and go to work on Monday, and, and just have a good time, but just please remember there are other people out there that are affected by some noise and stuff like that. That's it.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Middleton?
Thank you, Mayor. SACOG meeting this past, two weeks ago, actually, and we got a grant, the city received a grant for the retail rooftops fund program, so I'm really excited about that, to help us decide how we can further expand and, you know, our multi-use, mixed-use properties.
Good, I saw that, and I was trying to find it on the SACOG page for more information, and I'm gonna need to talk to you more about that. Wasn't too enlightening. All right, thank you. For myself, this past Tuesday, I spoke as Regional Transit Chair of the Board at the kickoff for the fast charging, car charging project at the Power Inn Light Rail Station, and when completed, this will be the largest in California to date. I know we were pioneers six years ago or so, when we got a fast charging station at the Rayleigh's over across the other side of Highway 80. I also attended the Area 2 and 6 Neighborhood Association meeting on Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday, and updated them on the Relief Act funding, we're gonna be talking about that tonight, and some of our current development projects underway. Tomorrow, I'll have the honor of speaking to the Carrington College graduation, which includes a lot of our Citrus Heights residents. And that's all I have for my report. So with that, we'll move on to public comment, please.
Okay. So, members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you're participating in the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand function, or star nine from a telephone, to indicate your desire to speak. I also have some speaker cards from the members of the public that are here tonight, and I do have some that, to read. So I'll go ahead and start with the ones to read first, and then, do you have a preference if you want to take the ones on Zoom, or here in the audience tonight, first?
Well, since this is the first night back, I'd like to take members of the audience.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and read the first public comment, from Alfred Sanchez. "Thank you for having the community center open as a cooling center. We have a lot of 100-degree-plus days coming up. Please, please open the cooling center again." Next is from Dixon Martinez. "I want to offer an update on my public comment and the city council's request on June 10th regarding a note I received the first week of May to trim up my palm tree located at Albury Street in our city. This time, I want to share my deepest gratitude to all of those that made possible the removal of the palm tree and financial burden for my family. First, I want to thank city council member Brett Daniels for getting the ball rolling and contact Republic Service on my behalf, to senior code enforcement officer Deborah Nathan for coordinating with maintenance inspector supervisor Armando Velazquez to drop off the dumpster and pick up equipment, to Mayor Steve Miller for asking other city officers to look into this matter, as he reported to the Sentinel. I want to thank Lieutenant Chad Morris for arranging an anonymous donation for the rental of the dumpster. A special thanks to Mike Haslip, a reporter at the Citrus Heights Sentinel, for asking questions and getting the attention of those involved, and to those I did not mention that made it possible. I still wonder about my neighbors in the same situation. Are they getting the help as well? Can this council arrange for additional resources for those families? Like extra time to comply with a debate notice, a resource sheet with local businesses, services with a discount, or work with other agencies to combine services, maintenance advice, or creative ways to repurpose palm trees?"
Mayor, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
I just want to thank Mr. Martinez for that... Am I on? I just want to thank Mr. Martinez for that email, that's tremendous when people take the time to write to us. But I also want to clarify that it was not me that got the ball rolling to contact Republic Services, so whoever that was, thank you on Mr. Martinez's behalf, but I just wanted to make sure that, that got cleared up. Don't want to take credit where credit's not due.
Well, and sometimes we're just not looking for credit, you know?
Thank you, whoever did that.
Thank you, Brett.
And the next one I have is from, for item number six, and there was an item on consent that was polled, is that?
We haven't, we haven't talked about consent.
Oh, okay, okay. Just, I know I was dealing with technical difficulties, but this is for item number six on the consent calendar. Irene Ronik. "I am writing on behalf of the Citrus Heights Homeless Assistance Resource Team HART. We encourage the council members to support continuing and expand the Navigator services contracted for our city. The Navigator offers outreach, resources, and services not otherwise accessible to vulnerable people experiencing homelessness. With the Navigator's guidance and encouragement, we have seen people navigate the steps out of homelessness to reunite with family, return to a sober life, and transition to stable housing. Please support the Navigator program." And the next item that I have to read is for item 16, but I'll go ahead and hold that comment until we get to item 16. And I do have some public comment cards for members of the public, and the first one that I'll call, and I apologize if I don't get your name correctly, Amy Kasovny.
Hi, Amy, welcome.
Hi, am I on?
You're on.
Great. Well, I just wanted to come and thank you tonight for considering item number 16, the resolution to support moving to seven members at the San Juan School Board. Thank you so much for having that important conversation, and thank you for supporting students in our community.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Juan Ynez, is it, did I get that correctly?
My name is Juan Yenegas. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I'm very pleased and grateful that you have placed Neighborhood or By District Elections for the San Juan Unified School District on the agenda this evening. My roots are deep in San Juan. My family moved here in Carmichael in 1968. I'm a graduate, as are my three siblings, two daughters, and a niece. I have served on three district advisory committees, chair two. I have also participated in two district-wide search committees. I've retired from a career in higher education policy and administration. I'm one of five litigants who sued San Juan to require them to conform to the California Voting Rights Act of 2002. I'm also an executive committee member of the San Juan Community Action Network, SJCAN, an important organization in support of our efforts. We are demanding that San Juan convert from at-large winner-take-all school board elections for five seats to neighborhood elections for seven seats. At-large elections impair the city, the ability of the city of Citrus Heights to identify, support, and elect natural leaders from your own neighborhoods. At-large elections unfairly entrench incumbents financed by special interests and make district policies less accountable to the public. As one of the 10 largest school districts in California, San Juan is one of the two that still conduct at-large election. It is no mystery, then, that with a quarter of its students from Citrus Heights, San Juan has not had a board member from your city since 2002. This also helps explain why Citrus Heights schools suffer from poor academic outcomes. If everyone is in charge, no one is in charge. After many years of trying to work with the district, we have no faith that it will do the right thing on this issue. We are circulating a petition requesting that the Sacramento County Board of Education direct San Juan to implement seven districts. The petition can be accessed at sjcan.org. Throughout the month of July, San Juan will hold hearings to draw new district maps. We fear, excuse me, we fear they will do insufficient outreach and will require in-person attendance without real access via Zoom. This is in the era of COVID. Finally, unless community pressures applied, we have no faith that San Juan will draw a map or maps with seven districts, thereby marginalizing Citrus Heights. Please join us in our efforts to convince San Juan that seven districts are essential. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker, Magali Kincaid.
Good evening. My name is Magali Kincaid, and I'm a parent in the San Juan Unified School District. And I'm thrilled to see this resolution on the agenda tonight, and I hope that you will all support the resolution. For too long, our neighborhoods have not been represented on the San Juan Unified School Board. The results of this lack of representation is exemplified through the student outcomes and lack of engagement. It's time for our neighborhoods to have local representation on the school board, and seven school board members instead of five is a great first step. Although this resolution speaks loudly, we must ensure that the school district hears us and does not create maps with only five board members, or we will not see the representation that we seek. I encourage Citrus Heights parents and community to write the school board, and more importantly, attend the upcoming special school board meetings on the drawing of the neighborhood maps, and make public comments. We must make sure they hear that we want a seven-member board and a representative in Citrus Heights and in other neighborhoods that have been left out. The first meeting is on July 1st, and I hope that community will visit our Facebook page at Neighborhood Elections, or visit sjcan.org for more info on how we can do this together. Thank you, and thank you, city council members, for having this discussion and your leadership on this issue.
Thank you.
And the next public comment I have is from David Warren, and you had actually filled out for general public comment, as well as item number five.
I'm hoping that item number five is gonna be a separate agenda item, so I'd like to withhold my comments on that until it's being discussed by the city council. But as to general matters, I have two issues. First, I question placing the cooling center in the area where it is now located. There's no bus service to that area, whereas at Rush Park, we have five different bus, regular bus lines, including the local short-circuit system. Wherefore, it's very difficult for those people who need the cooling center to access it by the city hall. I think that with the threat of extreme weather coming up in the next week, 100-degree or close to over 100-degree weather, that the city should seriously consider having the cooling center at Rush Park, which has much more access to a larger community of residents who can walk or take buses that are regularly scheduled. Second, I contacted the California City Managers Foundation, that's the California Association of City Managers, best way to describe it. They have a site for jobs, posting jobs, and for job seekers from all over the country and all over the state to seek job openings. It appears that, for some reason, the city's present position has not been lodged with the association. That may be because there's an oversight on their part, or there's a failure by the city to have them notice the job availability in Citrus Heights. Granted, the city manager's position is available to look at on the city's webpage, but if you're in Nevada, or Oregon, or in Southern California, you're certainly not going to look on every city webpage to see if there's a job opening. So, if it has not been submitted to the California City Managers Foundation, which has a large pool of people who have masters and other degrees in municipal and state management, then I hope that the city council will make sure that this week, that the city manager's job is posted there, so many qualified and diverse individuals can apply for the job of city manager in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes for the general public comment. So, in Zoom, I do have one member of the public who has raised his hand, from Scott Rafferty. You can now unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you. I want to echo the really well-spoken comments that have been made in favor of seven trustee areas in San Juan. I mean, no system is perfect, and there are no absolutes, but it is absolutely the right answer when a school district is this big, that they have trustee areas, that they have more than five trustees. San Juan is a real outlier, and, you know, it shows. We've documented the association of problems from having just not a good, strong connection with each community, and it, it results in these completely anomalous situations, where a city that's a quarter of the population doesn't have a member for almost 20 years now. So, I'm so grateful for your support. I do want to add that the way to really change this dynamic, because they haven't been very responsive to seven members, is to show up at the hearings, and they're running this like, like just a rocket ship, so it's, there's not much time, but there are hearings on July 1st and July 7th, and they really need to see a lot of people supporting this, this concept. And that's when you need to let them know how to draw the Citrus Heights districts, so, or trustee areas. So I hope that many of your constituents will make the effort to do that. It's wonderful that they're having community meetings. I'm sure that at least one of them will be in Citrus Heights, but that will be after the maps can't be changed. So, I encourage people, I'm sorry, it's the first and the 13th are the hearings, and then the final adoption of one of the maps, and there'll probably be three, will be on July 27th. So, I hope that your constituents can, can really show the flag at those, on those occasions. Thank you very much, and thank you so much for this resolution. I think it can change things. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one more member of the public from the audience that would like to speak, Tom Nelson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Miller, Vice Mayor Middleton, members. Clerk Van, it's, I want to say, it's a pleasure being here. This, this meeting really has a wonderful community feel to it. I, my name is Tom Nelson. I serve as the chairperson on the advisory committee to the San Juan School Board on their annual district plan. I also hold positions within the Third District PTA, and I'm also a member of the San Juan Community Action Network, commonly known as SJCAN. I simply want to say that I, I'm also in support of the resolution to support seven members on the San Juan, seven districts for the San Juan Unified School District, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I just, that is, completes the public comment. I do have an item to read for number 16, and then two public comment cards for number 15, and then for item five, if it was polled. So next is consent calendar, items four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
Any items which should be pulled by council members?
I'd like to pull item number five, please.
Okay, any, any others? With that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of consent, less item five.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries, you announce.
So, item number five, the subject is CHPD Red Light Photo Enforcement Program Contract Renewal. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city to amend the agreement with Red Flex Traffic Systems for the red light photo enforcement program.
Evening, Mayor Miller, and members of the council. As Amy gets the PowerPoint set up, I wanted to take a moment to introduce Traffic Lieutenant Jason Baldwin will be presenting this agenda item for you tonight. And before I do, I want to compliment Lieutenant Baldwin on the many questions that he's already answered from individual council members on this topic. He's worked to incorporate answers to your questions into his presentation, which has frankly made it a little lengthy tonight, but we wanted to share the answers to your individual questions, so that you all had the same information about this topic. We recognize that the red light camera program is controversial for some, but it's very supported by many others. I want to express that I am a believer in the use of this program in Citrus Heights based on the success in our community. It's served to educate our public, reduce traffic collisions, prevent injuries, and save lives. We do not have nearly enough police officers to enforce traffic violations to the degree that I would prefer, so technology, such as the red light camera enforcement program, serve to help us enforce blatant traffic violations that would otherwise go unaccountable. I've heard individuals express that they've had or nearly had rear-end collisions from drivers slamming on their brakes to avoid running a red light. And I want to be clear, that these types of rear-end collisions have nothing to do with the photo red light program, as they occur in every city, at every red light intersection. What they're a cause of is drivers not paying attention, and by driving too fast, too fast to safely stop at a red light. The bottom line is, if you don't want to be held accountable for breaking the law, don't break the law. If you don't want to receive a red light citation, either from a police officer in the field, or from a police officer reviewing the red light photo, it's simple, follow the law and stop at the red light. In the presentation you're about to hear from Lieutenant Baldwin, I believe you'll see the merits of the program, and I encourage your ongoing support for this crucial piece of our traffic safety plan. The presentation's a little lengthy, but again, we wanted to address all of your complex issues. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Baldwin.
Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening, City Council. Can you see my screen okay?
Yep.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Miller, Vice Mayor Middleton, council members, city manager Boyd. Pleasure of leading our traffic unit. Is knowledgeable, diligent in their duty. Care very much about traffic safety in this community. To Officer McCoy and his band currently deployed in the Army. Transportation. If you remember, we had. We are very proud. Unfortunately, this week, we had our first traffic fatality in 2020. We were hoping for a year of zero. Unfortunately, that didn't. However, we have been successful at reducing our overall collisions throughout the city. This is 2018, 19, and 20, in comparison to 2006 and 2007. Both ends completed our inner safety. Means. When someone runs, there's a collision. Reason for the collision. Failure to. Collisions. Include. Side. Collisions include sideswipe with objects. The back intersections enforced by the photo red light. The red numbers indicate the year. Was installed. Sure. That. And the rate of all signal actions by 14%. What's called the halo enters into a local. Red light. Person carries. Driving to the next intersection and. It's called the halo effect. Intersections may not monitor red light system. Difference between 20, 2000 and. Is a 47. Photo red light program exists. Twenty, twenty-one reduction. Seven, forty-seven correction, forty and a half percent of collision. We. Red light. Collisions are far the worst. The forces involved in that collision are extreme. Some of the vehicles are. Side swipe or. The photo. Successful in reducing. We have reduced overall collisions. Of the collision data breakdown. In 2000, the consultants. The ISP. In 2007. The First Amendment to that. Twenty. Council approved. Be added to the existing. In 2018. It's contractual. Under the extended contract. To extensions. Twenty. New term. However. Did a couple. And to assess. Enforcement, which of course. Traffic safety. So what is the camera, red light camera? It's smart. Save lives. Sticks that. That. Reduce. Violation. Impact collisions. Sixty-eight. This fatality. Based. Institute for. Eight percent. The insurance institute. Is the halo effect. Reduces. It'll crash. Not just enforcement. We have eight. Our photo red light program. These locations. These. For those locations. Locations in 2019. Not to include 2020. Because an outlier. Greenback and. The most. Little under 1,400 citations. Greenback. Auburn at 205 citations annually. Total citations in 2019 were 7,850. That's eight intersections. And. Yellow lights. So. And. To be. Percent. Speed of. Vehicles. So how does a violation review work? When we get a potential violation, that's an event, when somebody crosses the intersection and the lights flash, we call that an event. That event is reviewed and sent over. It's reviewed by two different people at Red Flex, who is our vendor. The evidence is reviewed by a third time at. Then certified. A citation is mailed to the registered owner. The video is available for every recipient of a citation by the way of a link, or they can review it here at the police department. Citation may be appealed or paid in court. And. Were pedestrians or bicyclists. They use. In California. Hundred and fifty-six. Cities. That. Fatal red light. That's. All right, that's according to the Institute for. So in this first. These. And our. In this program. Traffic, the traffic infraction fixed penalty schedule is set by the state. The city does not have any say in what those fees are. So our most common red light camera enforced fees here are a straight and a right-hand turn through a red light. Running a red light straight through the circle here is the base fine. That's $100 base fine for running straight through a red light. The fines to the right of it, those are fees applied by the courts, state, and EMS and DMV. All of those different entities apply different fees. So at the end of that citation, the basic citation is $490. A right-hand turn against a red light is $35 base fee. The city's percentage. Per violation under the California Penal Code is 74% of the base fine. So if the base fine is $100 for one citation, the city would be issued $74 based off of Funds. Five and fiscal year. Goes to the monthly. Vendor who is red. Three thousand are the salary and benefits for one community server. Who is dedicated to the photo red light program. Dollars goes to. Fund and is set aside for road. Safety. And $2,000. And the auditing of. Vendor here. Pretty. Limit. The red light. Is a non, is 2019. Here, the potential events or the events or potential violations, that's when the lights flash. In 2019, there were 23,436 potential events. What came to the PD were 12,907 warnings or citations. Out of that, the police department actually issued 7,857 citations. The rest. So when we look at who is actually getting those citations, the vast majority of people that receive a citation. Program are out. Residents. Only about 26% of the citation are city residents. We have about, we have well over 14 million vehicles on our. Year. The 2020, so this is actually data from a COVID here. People cited. Were 5,177. Out of those, out of that. 186. Heights residents. Dollars. Staff. One. Of. The. 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 The.
Thank you, Lieutenant Baldwin. Before I take public comment, any questions by council? And we'll do discussion after public comment.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Lieutenant Baldwin, you've made comments regarding the yellow light and the timing of the yellow light that it's set by some statute. I just wanted to clarify, did you say that the minimum amount of yellow time is what's regulated? Or does that include also the maximum amount of time that the light can be yellow?
I actually thought this question would come up, so I'll call on Leslie Blumquist to answer that question for you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the California MUTCD does recommend the minimum yellow time, which is based on the 85th percentile speed. They do provide, and it is calculated utilizing the time to react, the speed of the cars and the deceleration of those cars. We actually here in the city go through and utilize the Sacramento County Regional, and we use the 90th percentile speed, so a bit higher than the 85th, just to be a bit conservative. So although that is the minimum, we go slightly above that and increase our yellows based on the 90th percentile.
Did I hear you say that they can be longer, basically?
Yes.
Okay. And then on red light, going from yellow to red, used to be in the old days, whenever you, your light turned red and you were going north or south, and the light turned green for the east and west traffic, it was like instant. One went red, one went green. And now there's a delay in a lot of them, but there's a real wide range of that yellow, that delay, where all the lights go red for a short period of time. Is there, Lieutenant Baldwin, if you know, is there a regulation or a restriction on how long all the lights can go red at an intersection before the other direction goes green?
Leslie, do you want to take that one as well?
Sure. There's no minimum or maximum for the all-red duration. That is calculated based on the approaching speed, the size of the intersection, and the distance to the next phase that will get the green, so that we can make sure that we provide the proper clearance should anyone enter at the very end of a yellow cycle.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Baldwin, for your presentation. Really appreciate it. Can you tell me what percentage of the red light violations are red, right-hand turn on a red?
Yes, I can, if you would give me a few minutes to look through the data, sir.
Sure.
And maybe while you do that, I could take public comment, and we'll come back to your questions. Is that okay?
Great.
Perfect. Amy, let's go ahead with public comment on this item.
The speaker is David Warren.
My name is David Warren, and I'm speaking in opposition to the renewal of the red light contract. I think that the videos that were shown today of drivers driving through the intersections, to use the Latin term, resipsolocut, or facts speak for themselves. The fact that the intersections are posted and people are still driving through the red lights tells us that they're not stopping the people we want to stop. They're people who are not paying attention to their driving. Therefore, they're completely ineffectual. I have been at the intersection of San Juan and Greenback, and you can't miss both the strobe lights going off and the large signs, and I watch. And I watch people go through that red light day after day after day when they're making their left turn onto Greenback. They're not working. It's a waste of time, effort and money. And I think the city of Citrus Heights should join the other cities who have terminated red light cameras. Thank you.
And that's all the public comment I have for this item.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, is there a motion?
Oh, I thought you wanted to go back to some discussion then.
Sure. Is there a discussion?
I don't need to start, I just, I just, whoever wants to start is fine, but.
Let's go first.
I'll be happy to start. And again, I very much appreciate all of the patience with my questions of staff and you know, I did graph out the Red Flex citation history from 2008 through 2020. Certainly 2020 is a down year because of the pandemic. So even if we remove 2020, we're seeing an uptick, a significant trend line up towards the number of citations. You would think that you would see as the citations over a period of time, I would expect that if they are, if we were really effective at this, the number of citations would start going down because people would stop running the red lights. I don't see that at all. As a matter of fact, it's a pretty dramatic increase and I apologize for not having the data in front of the audience here, but it is a pretty, pretty dramatic graph where the trend line actually is, is increasing over, over the period of, of 12 years. So in regard, with regard to the, to the crash data, the three top intersections were Auburn Boulevard and Greenback Lane where we did see a trend initially when the, when the cameras were put in, we saw a slowing of crash data, but for green, for Auburn Boulevard and Greenback Lane, very flat. No trend one way or the other. So I need some kind of indication that this is an effective program. Same thing with when I look at Sunrise and Greenback. Again, the, the data initially shows that people were paying attention to it, but I think once people get used to the, the fact that cameras are there, they just blow right through them. And I, and I suspect, I don't know, I'm looking forward to Lieutenant Baldwin's information, but I, I do suspect that there's a significant number of right hand turn on a red, which is less likely to have a collision than we would, we watched the videos of the people blowing right through the, straight through the intersection. That is incredibly dangerous, but typically when somebody is coming up to an intersection, absolutely it is the law, they should stop, come to a complete stop. And I'm not condoning not coming to a complete stop. I will say that I had a family member who received a right hand turn on a red ticket at Park Oaks and Greenback. She should pay the fine. The, the fine was over $500 for that. So I saw that this, the fee schedule was $238. So I'm not sure how that, why that would be, but nonetheless. And I do also recognize that there are other factors besides the red light cameras affecting traffic and that is, so when I look at Greenback and San Juan, that was, we did see a pretty dramatic decrease in crash data. We also saw 25% of that intersection that the, that the businesses where Osh is and that whole strip mall before, before Green Acres was in there, that was pretty much vacant. And that, that was vacated during this period of time. So I think that affects a number of traffic volume, people coming in and out of the intersections and, and making that turn right, right to go to Osh. So anyhow, that's just, I, I really need to see compelling data to really and, and I, I'm not sure I've seen it yet. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, I have a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
In light of the fact that we do not have enough of a police presence in Citrus Heights, I think the most effective way to deter red light violations would be actually have officers patrolling the streets. We don't really have that option at this point. So taking away a deterrent, a deterrent, regardless of how effective we may believe it to be or not, we can't just take that away and not have something in its place. We saw data that, you know, from, from the presentation where there was a 30% increase in some jurisdictions where these red lights were taken out and there were more violations later on. So removing a deterrent just because it's not effective without having another possible viable solution is not, not the right answer, in my opinion.
Yeah, there's a lot of points to this that, you know, one of the things, the chief is right, if you don't want a ticket, don't run the red light. Okay, that, that's the bottom line, if you don't want a ticket, don't run the red light. But there's a human factor here too. And as somebody who spent, you know, 20 years in law enforcement and pulled a ton of people over for running red lights, the, the, the issue of the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law comes into play very deeply. And when you run a red light on a camera, you are immediately pretty much charged, convicted and sentenced. And there's no officer there, there's no discretion, you know, there's no, you know, well, did it happen at, at, you know, that, that moment, right, when the light turned red? And, you know, you might've even been under the speed limit and you just, you know, you just got it wrong and you made a mistake and you didn't really endanger anybody. And, you know, I pull you over and say, hey, be more careful, I check your driving record and you go on your way, as opposed to, you know, the person who, you know, you can hear the engine gunned and he's coming from, you know, way back and he's just trying to make that light and, and creates a real hazard. Those are different things. And Mr. Warren made a great point, he, he kind of stole my thunder on, those videos are horrifying to watch, but they're also demonstration of people running red lights with red light cameras. And so when we look at the numbers and they just actually, they're not going down, they're going up. They're going as far as the violation, the numbers. So the, the point of the cameras is to make the intersections safer. They're not doing that. They're not doing that. What they're doing is pushing millions of dollars out of our community. And so what we should be discussing is how do we make intersections safer? What do we do? What can we do? You know, what are other communities doing to make intersections safer? Because the cameras aren't doing it, you know? Again, you know, there's no way for us to go back and get this kind of data, but I bet if we went back and looked at data for people who got red light violations, I would venture to say they're, they're more of a, a person who just made a mistake. You know, they're not the kind of person who just drives around blowing red lights all the time. And so we're just kind of smacking around the wrong person, I think, in, in the big picture. And so I don't know if it's the, if it's the right way to go. I, I really think it's important that the, the element of the spirit of the law has been lost on a red light camera type of situation. I would like us to instead examine, how do we make intersections safer? How do we, how do we take those things that control intersections? And, and, and that's basically signalization and signage and stuff like that. How do we make it safer? I, I think yellow lights should be a little bit longer and that could even be as much as, you know, half a second. But I really think what we ought to be doing is shutting down the intersection for a couple of seconds. And I'm talking like two to three seconds. I drove around before the council meeting tonight because I wanted to see, you know, what kind of delay we're seeing here in Citrus Heights when lights go from red in one direction to green in another direction. And some of them were probably up in the two second range and some of them were probably less than a half a second. And if we slowed that intersection down, we calm that intersection down for just two to three seconds, I think that makes a difference. I think that's what causes people to, to hopefully stop like they're supposed to, but if they didn't and they just missed it, and you can miss it, I have run a red light. And if you've never run a red light, you know, God bless you, but, but I have run a red light inadvertently. And, and so on more than one occasion, so it happens, it just happens, we're humans. And so given the chance to calm the intersection down, I think would be actually more powerful. And even signage, one of the things that we're getting ready to do on Old Auburn is put up some, some different stuff. And we're going to add the yellow warning signs for crosswalks that have the flashing lights to them. You know, you put a little solar thing on there, you have the flashing light. And I could see that as being very useful at every intersection when as you're coming up to that intersection, you're seeing that sign that shows the signals, the red, yellow, green. And it just catches your eyes a little bit and that flashing light on that sign hopefully catches your eyes to where you think, oh yeah, I've got, I've got a red light coming up maybe. And so looking at that, I think is, is a better way to, to, to create a positive effect because the numbers don't lie. And so the numbers are telling us that it's just, the number of citations are just going up and up and up. And so the tool that we're using is not working. It's not working. And all it's doing is sending a whole bunch of money to Arizona. And the one thing we didn't hear is 583,000 goes to Red Flex, 103,000 comes to us and a whole bunch more millions goes, I'm guessing, to the state. And so we know how well they spend our money. So I don't think that that we're doing ourselves the, the best service we can do by using this system. And I think we ought to look for a different type of way to make our intersections safer.
Thank you. Jeanne?
Yeah, go ahead. I want to thank everybody for their comments and let you know how I feel about it. Some of the issues that were brought up is the fact that we do have a limited police force and we don't have enough police officers out there to really impact the traffic situations at all of our intersections. And one of our, one of our primary, primary goals when we first became a city was to attack the horrendous traffic statistics that we had going in because we had such minimal enforcement. And so we've always been very conscientious about our traffic enforcement in Citrus Heights across the board with all the different methods that we've used from DOI checkpoints to, you know, our, our, our motor unit to red, the Red Flex and other methods as well. Couple of things that were said, I'd just like to weigh in on. One is, is that given the statistics that Lieutenant Baldwin gave us tonight, you know, most of the people that are violators are from outside of our city. And most of the traffic that is generated in Citrus Heights are people that are cutting through our city to go from point A to point B. And so people from outside of Citrus Heights endanger the situation for our residents and the people that travel within our city, just doing the normal business that we do as citizens. And so from that perspective, I think that it is a, a telling statistic that we, that we address, we're able to address the violators that abuse our cities, quite, our city roads, quite frankly. The other, one of the other comments I'd like to weigh in on are what Councilmember Daniels said on the human factor. Lieutenant Baldwin showed us the levels of review that go into the red light tickets or, or incidences that are reported. You know, they're reviewed, I think he said, three times at Red Flex. And if we had 23,000 plus in the last, the year that we were looking at, which I believe was 2019, of those, about 14,000 to 15,000 came down to the city and of those, you know, 7,000 and change people were actually issued violations and the rest were issued warnings. So that human factor plays a role in that it is reviewed on three or four different levels before someone actually gets a ticket. And it's, even at that, it can still be, it can still be challenged as any other ticket can be. The other statement that was made was that millions of dollars are going out of our community. And I just want to make it clear that that's whatever, I don't know what the millions of dollars are, but based on the, the numbers that were reported by Lieutenant Baldwin, it's 583,000 dollars in that area is the annual fee that is paid to Red Flex, which comes from the, the ticket revenue. Doesn't come out of our pocket. It's not money leaving our city that would otherwise be spent in our city. So that needs to be clarified as well. I really like the idea about calming the intersection. I think that was an excellent idea. And I don't believe it's a mutually exclusive idea. I think we add that to our, our quiver, if you will, or our tool, our toolbox that we use to keep our streets safe. So all that to say, I, I believe that our red light program is a valuable tool to our police department. And in today's day and age where law enforcement on all levels is having their ability to enforce the law, taken from them for, but through state legislation mostly, I don't want to see another tool removed from, from their toolbox. And so I am going to support renewing this for another five years and take a real close look at how it, how it works and, and recommend that we add some of these other suggestions in too, such as the calming of intersections. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Lieutenant Baldwin, did you get the answer for Mr. Schaefer?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I did not. I will have to get back to Mr. Schaefer with that in a separate correspondence.
Okay, thank you. So.
With the mounds of questions that we had and the amounts of data that we have, it's, we have the information. It's just we were not prepared tonight to answer that question on top of the other questions he answered.
Right. And so one thing troubling for me is quantifying lives saved. You know, we have the Insurance Institute that's, that has made some estimates of how many collisions are avoided, how many lives are saved, how many injuries are prevented. And to me, when you think about cost, one accident costs us police officers, their time dealing with the accident. You've got fire department there to extract people, the ambulance ride, ER room, insurance costs, we have lost work time. I mean, just one accident. And I'm not prepared to remove these cameras and tempt fate with one of those that we can't quantify deaths, injury, accidents. And I think that one of the biggest ones, we keep talking about the right hand turns, is that's where the pedestrian's exposed. The person's looking to the oncoming traffic on the left, they see it's clear and they just whip around. And if there's someone in a wheelchair in that intersection, you don't see them. If there's someone stepping off the curb with the walk sign, you don't see them. And I get a little nervous when we're up here and we start trying to play traffic engineers. I know there's a lot of things that go into it. I know there's a delay in the yellow before the, the other direction goes. If you go too long, people start jumping it. I'm guilty of watching that yellow red out of the corner of my eye, knowing that when it's time to take the foot off the brake and get going as quickly as possible. And so we also tempt fate with people gunning it early to get across the intersection, then we have a red light runner and the two come together. So I'm not prepared even to spare, you know, to put one life on the line and, and remove these. And let's see, I think they've pretty much covered everything or has been covered in, in comments. So we cannot quantify the lives and money saved at all. I mean, that's data we just can't have. And then of course, we can watch as we remove them and the statistics say that the deaths, injuries and collisions will go up. And so for that, I would support this resolution as well. Is there a motion from a council member?
I move that we support staff's recommendation to extend this contract for another five years.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, seconds by Middleton.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion, please.
You're certainly entitled to.
Just like to offer a substitute motion that we remove the citations or the, the red, right hand turn on a red violations. And we really attack, if we're going to keep these, we attack the straight runners through and we focus on those.
Second.
Okay, there's a substitute motion by Schaefer, second by Daniels. We will take that first.
Before we do, may I just comment on?
Sure.
I don't understand how that, I don't understand how that's going to make it a more viable program. I mean, the cameras are there. And just help me understand that, Tim, I just don't understand it.
Well, I, I honestly think that, that most of the time I, I, my experience is when people are creeping out to look around the corner to see if somebody's coming, that's typically when I, I, you know, my personal feeling is I'd. typically when I, I, you know, my personal feeling is I, I don't think that, that that's, that contributes significantly to any crash data or any lost lives, the, the right-hand turn on a red.
Well-
Still a violation of the law and-
I think that Lieutenant Baldwin's statistics showed it is a smaller number than the ones that run through the red light. But then, Mayor Miller makes a really good argument-
He didn't say one way or the other on that.
Yeah, actually-
He had a national number, not, not a local-
Was that a national number? Oh, my apologies, my apologies. Anyway, so we could, we could bring that down, I guess, to a lower level, to a, a lower denomination, to a local level. But, but again, you know, what the habit of looking to the left and then going to the right is a common thing. And I think the pedestrians are the ones that are most at risk in that. So, that's why, those are my thoughts on it.
Okay. Well, it's, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the substitute motion, please?
Councilmember Bruins?
No.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
No.
And Mayor Miller?
No.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Sure, what do you got?
Going to speak to Councilmember Middleton's comments about the number of officers. I think it's a good point. However, we are on track to get our police force back up to speed within the next two years. So, I would like to offer a substitute motion to modify that, the original motion to just be a two-year contract.
Question, I have a question on that. This is a question for the chief. I am presuming that the lower fee that we are paid, that we have negotiated is in part a result of the length of the contract. Is, is that correct? Or would there be any kind of an impact on what we pay if we had a shorter contract?
Yeah, that's correct. We would have to go back and renegotiate and the, the terms of the contract would change. The cost would likely go up.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'd like to speak to that. You know, I didn't get a chance to look into it because it came to us late because somebody provided us some information that there were several cities throughout California that are, and I think in the area, that are paying a lot less than what we are looking to pay per camera or intersection. Do we have any information on what other entities are paying?
Yes, we do. We actually contacted Elk Grove and the exact same terms that we have are the same exact terms that they have.
I think they have less cameras is why their amount's less. Correct?
You'd think it would be more because they'd have to make up the cost.
Sure.
So, but my question went towards were there other entities that are paying less? I understand that's Elk Grove, but, but I know that we did receive some information that indicated some folks are paying a lot less, a lot less.
We don't have that information. If you'd share it with me, I'd be happy to look into it. But we have no indication that to be the case.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Daniels has made a substitute motion. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Okay. Second by Schaefer. Let's go ahead and take that.
Councilmember Bruins?
No.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
No.
And Mayor Miller?
No.
Okay.
All right. Well, that brings us back to the original motion. And a yes vote approves, in this case, the resolution, just to be clear. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the original motion?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Yes.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries three, two. Onto the next item, please.
So, the next item, just to be clear, is item number 16, which is, the subject is discussion and possible action to support San Juan Unified School District Board of Education transitioning from at-large to by trustee elections comprised of seven electoral districts. And as a reminder, I do have one written public comment for this item that was, that has not been read yet.
Okay, well, let's, is there a presentation? Oh, actually, I don't think there is.
Mayor-
Yes. Oh, aye, Chris.
-interim city manager. No, this was, this issue was, was raised. I placed it on the agenda really for, for council's discussion. So, no staff recording.
Okay, thank you. Well, what do you think?
Public comment, let's hear the public comment.
Okay, we'll go right to public comment then.
So, public comment for item number 16 from Carolina Flores. The San Juan Unified School District has for decades been allowed to have no representation, representation on their school board, both the, for Citrus Heights and for the West Ardent Arcade area. For the sake of basic democracy, support this resolution and have a seven-member San Juan Unified School Board for Citrus Heights to finally be represented. For years, the district has ignored schools like Encina High School and San Juan High School who have the highest number of suspensions and students expelled. Rather than have simple fixes like a restorative justice program, the district has practiced bias by neglecting impoverished areas like West Arcade, Ardent Arcade. Pass this resolution for Citrus Heights to have representation on the district school board. The district must be monitored since it openly violates the Brown Act in not allowing public comment, refusing to offer Zoom meetings to the public, and failing to provide the public's written testimony. The district does not allow for any translation of public testimony, testimony made in Spanish into English. You must be vigilant that the district does not cut off the time for the public to provide input and selection for the new redistricting map. The district agreed last year to a single district election, then used an at-large election for three members to be illegally reelected. Historically, the district makes promises, then renegades on their agreement to you and the public. And I do have one raised hand in Zoom to speak. Raj, you can now unmute yourself and speak.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, council members. I am Raj Rai, Coordinator of Communications for San Juan Unified School District. On behalf of the district, I wanted to thank you for participating in this important conversation around the transition to by trustee area elections. I also wanted to share that while the legal deadlines of the process and impacts of the pandemic have created a compact timeline, there are several opportunities that we wanted to encourage local residents to participate in so they too can share their views. The Board of Education will hold special meetings on July 1st and 13th. On July 20th and 22nd, we will hold community meetings at three locations each evening throughout the district, as well as an option to participate online. And finally, the board will meet again on July 27th to review all feedback and take action. I would encourage those who are interested to visit our website at www.sanjuan.edu/elections, where they can find information in multiple languages on the process, the timeline, and have the ability to submit feedback at any time. Thank you again for taking part in this important conversation.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
I'll start.
Sure.
Okay. Many of you know that I have a long history of interacting with our educational system here in Citrus Heights. Initially, as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, who had a very strong education program where we had business people on campus throughout the year, teaching courses that had to do with getting students ready for life after high school. And a lot of subjects that were taught there that weren't offered in the regular curriculum. So, it was an enhancement. We were on both the Mesa Verde High School campus with the, through the Business Academy, and the San Juan campus with, through the Culinary Academy, which each of them are three-year programs, sophomore through senior. And I participated in those as well as worked with other programs that the chamber offered prior even to us becoming a city. And I served on two of the community advisory boards that have interviewed candidates for supervisor in the past. And in each case, that advisory board made a recommendation to the school board. And the school board then made their own decision, which supported our recommendation, took into consideration what we had to say. And we had two of our finest superintendents in Stephen Enoch and Pat Horecki during those years. Both of those superintendents came from outside of our district. They were experienced in other school areas and they were able to bring other, their experience from other districts into San Juan. At the same time, I will tell you that having been around city since its inception, even prior to being in the council, one of the first outcries we heard as a new city was that we needed to have our own school district because our educational system was substandard. Well, that's always the last card to play, and it's a difficult card to play. But I've heard that off and on over the 23 years that we've been a city. If you look at the statistics, San Juan Unified fares poorly as compared to the rest of the state, and Citrus Heights fares poorly within San Juan Unified. And in, that speaks in part, I believe, to the fact that we have not had local representation on that board in almost 20 years. The last and maybe only person that I'm aware of that served on the San Juan Unified School District Board of Trustees was Estelle Werby, who, who, who since passed away, but she left the board 19 years ago. It's come to my attention that four of the five school board members all live within two miles of each other. And so, that is a very small cluster of area and interest to represent a, a district of what, 350,000 students, 400,000 students, I guess. No, wait, people, not students. About 50,000 students. Yeah, that's a lot of students. So, I, you know, when we, we, when we as a city were faced with districts a few years ago, I adamantly was opposed to it because I didn't feel, and still to this day, don't feel that it solved any problems because the problems he addressed in the requirement to go to districts didn't exist in Citrus Heights, and it still doesn't exist. Having said that, I don't believe that's the case with the school district. We're, it's one of the largest districts in the state of California. We need to have local representation on that board. We, in Citrus Heights, comprise almost 25% of the student population, or of the, the population served, excuse me. And we don't have a representative on that board. By going to districts, we will be insured a representative on that board. And by going to seven districts, it will more clearly provide us the ability to be represented by more than just one-fifth of the board population, but by a district comprising Citrus Heights, then another district which is partially Citrus Heights to, and partially another area because of the way the population lays out. So, I'm so happy to see a, a citizen and parent and involved community effort to, to really address this. And so, having said all that, I think you're probably very aware that I would support this resolution, and I do. And I think it's coming at a very important time. Two years ago, I went through the, the effort for our first charter school to be chartered in Citrus Heights. And they, as you may know, that has to be approved by the school board. And hands down, they disapproved it without any comment at the board meeting that I attended. And we appealed it to the County Board of Education where it passed. And I'm happy to say that today, we have our first charter school in Citrus Heights, which offers yet another alternative to public education that our families deserve. So, I think that's enough. I've, I've said my say. So, I support the resolution.
Any other colleagues?
I have a few comments.
Well said, Jeanne.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. I actually went out yesterday evening with my two boys. I had them, you know, meet me over at Mariposa. Both of my boys attend schools in the district in our city. And the pandemic laid bare the disparities between our, our youth and our kids, you know, lack of food, lack of internet, and the struggles. And I feel like we had a representative in our district, representing the city of Citrus Heights, we would, we would have had better interaction with our board and better outcomes and not so much learning loss. Furthermore, the comments that I heard while walking out there, around the neighborhoods, people are wanting this. Our parents are wanting this. We were very specifically walking around the school area and talking to these parents. And they are just, they're, they're encouraged that there are folks out there that are really advocating for making sure that Citrus Heights has real representation. And not just talking about these other areas that are also economically repressed. And that's something that, you know, folks don't know it, but like, I'm middle child of nine. We grew up very poor. We went to the public school system. I got a very good education. But that's only because that system was built to serve the students that it was meant to serve.
Thank you. Let me think. I didn't, I didn't know we were poor, but we were too. Go ahead, Brett.
Thanks. You know, it, it's really shocking to me, just shocking, I tell you, that there's nobody from Citrus Heights on the San Juan Unified School District Board when 25% of the people in the district live in Citrus Heights. I, I'm just blown away. And, and it's been that way for, you know, almost 20 years. And it, it's, it's just shocking. And so, that needs to change. That needs to change. And certainly, one of the ways that would change is by districts. And as the only council member so far that has run, well, I, I'm sorry, Tim and I, by district, the thing about running by districts also, it doesn't mean that you only represent your district, but it means that you, you only have to target your effort into a certain smaller geographical area. And that, that levels the playing field. That levels the playing field for the candidate that doesn't have the big pockets and stuff like that. It allows them to actually get, get a little more intimate with, with the voters that they're, that they're looking to get elected by. And right now, with the setup with five, each board member would have to reach out to over 70,000 people if, if we went by districts with just five. And that's still a tremendous amount of people. And if you went to seven board members, you drop that down to about 50,000 people. Still a lot of people, but it's a whole lot less than, you know, 360,000 people or whatever it is that you're trying to reach to get elected to the board. So, districts really level the playing field for, especially for the candidate that, that doesn't have big pockets. And so, that's definitely a very positive thing. Wholeheartedly support it. And, and let me choose my words carefully, that if they don't go for it, to me, it's the final nail in, in Citrus Heights remaining in the San Juan Unified School District, that we have to find a way to be better represented with our, our kids in the school district.
Thank you.
So, I moved here with two small children in 1989. Both of them were, my son had just started school. He's went to Kingswood Elementary, Elementary School. My daughter went to Kingswood Elementary. My son went to, to Will Rogers. But I did have an opportunity to send them outside the district for a higher level. And just because the schools have for years and years, and my son's 36 now, my daughter's 33. And, and I sent them out of the district because the, the, the schools in the district were terrible. And I, that's something that I've, I, I've lamented for years and years. And, and I certainly, I would absolutely support this 100%. This is a, this is a step in the right direction. It's a step of Citrus Heights having a voice in the district. Because right now, even though we have two-by-twos, it just doesn't seem like we get anywhere. We've been working on this for quite a long time. And, and I fully support this, this resolution.
Well, I don't have much to add to what has been said, other than, part of my consternation is over the bond money we pay. And again, we're paying, apparently, you know, with our properties, I would imagine somewhere around 25% of this bond issue. We haven't seen that in our schools. You know, they, it's almost like they ran out of schools to fix up, and now they're putting athletic fields in. And it's, it's at targeted schools I, that the school board has identified as their magnets. And our kids in Citrus Heights leave our high school for these high schools where the money's at, where the programs are at. And not to say, I went a little different route. I took a chance, put my kids here at Citrus Heights Elementary, Sylvan and Mesa Verde. And I think some of it is, one, we have some great teachers, we still do. And you get out of it what you put into it. And both of them, in fact, now my son is a teacher at Mesa Verde. And he's teaching with some of the folks that inspired him to be a teacher. So, I'm very proud of that. But the facilities, we've had promises made, both for San Juan High School and Mesa Verde, that have never been realized. And so, we see the, the short end of the stick. And, you know, sports isn't really education, but I think it's an important part of education. And it's just so un- but I think it's an important part of education, and it's just so unbalanced, too. So that's where I'm at, and with that, I would entertain a motion, please.
I would move that we pass. Thank you, Portia. What can I do without you? Move staff's recommendation for a resolution in support of the electing districts by, excuse me, by electing trustees by district, and seven districts.
I second that.
Motion by Daniels, seconded by Bruins. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Resolution passes unanimously. All right, now back to business. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing. Item number 10, the subject is amendments to master fee schedule. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending and restating the city user fees and establishing new fees for certain services provided. Bill, you have to unmute your mic.
There we go. Let me try that again.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Yep, we can see you, we can hear you, and we've got the PowerPoint.
Very good, okay. So I am Bill Zanonian, I'm the Interim Administrative Services Director, and the item before you this evening is considering amendment to the city's master fee schedule. The city contracted with Matrix Consulting Group in 2019 to perform a comprehensive review of all of the city's user fees with the goal of identifying the actual cost of providing specialized city services and reducing at least some of the costs that were being subsidized by the general fund. Prior to 2019, the last citywide user fee study was completed in 2005. So the results of this project in 2019 was the development of a comprehensive master fee schedule for all city fees across all departments, which was approved by the city council in December of 2019. This evening, staff is proposing several adjustments to that master fee schedule. The first two adjustments being proposed are associated with building, planning, and engineering fees in the community development and general services departments. There were two fees that were included in the 2019 user fee study that were inadvertently omitted from the master fee schedule that was presented to the city council. The first was a general plan update fee, and just as far as background, the general plan is updated, or should be updated, approximately every 10 years at an estimated cost of $650,000. What is recommended is a fee of 6% on the building permit fee would generate approximately $65,000 a year, which would be accumulated over time and set aside to offset the cost of future updates to the city's general plan. The last comprehensive update to our general plan was completed in 2011, so we're already at 10 years. The next update is anticipated to be completed within the next three to five years, so this would at least start to accumulate funds for this next update. The second fee that was included in the Matrix study, but which was omitted from the information that was presented for consideration two years ago, is a technology fee, and this would cover technology costs associated with plan review and permitting in the city's building, planning, and engineering divisions. Those costs are about $70,000 per year, which are currently funded directly by the general fund. A fee of 4% would relieve this burden from the general fund and generate about $70,000 a year. General plan update and technology fees are fairly common in many cities as a way to relieve general fund costs and are utilized in cities in our area such as Roseville, Folsom, We're also proposing several adjustments to fees that are collected by the police department. The first one is a fee that is currently in place for data research and compilation. This is a fee that's set at $30 per hour. We're recommending that that fee be removed from our fee schedule as we determine that we should only be charging for the actual cost of copying documents, not doing research related to those public records requests. The second adjustment is a, again, this is a cleanup from the last 2019 review. A false alarm charge in Citrus Heights has been levied since the police department began collecting fees back in 2006 and is actually referenced in Section 3071 of the city's municipal Because it has been in place since the police department has been in the city, the city attorneys recommended that council take action to officially reinstate this longstanding fee in our current master fee schedule. The amount of the false alarm fee has not changed since 2006, and we're not recommending any increase to that fee, just that we get it officially back into our fee schedule. And again, the fee is the same as it has been for years, no charge for the first alarm and a charge for second and subsequent alarms within a 12-month period. The final proposed adjustments to the city's master fee schedule are related to animal services. The first recommendation is to the late fee for animal licensing. We're recommending that the animal license late fee be increased from $15 to $25. This would be consistent with the alarm permit late fee, which is actually specifically called out in the municipal code at $25. Second proposed adjustment is to the charge for rabies specimen testing. We're proposing that that fee be adjusted up to $283, and that would cover the city's actual out-of-pocket costs, costs that we incur and pay to Placer County, which is $228, and Sacramento County, we pay $55 for specimen collection and testing services. So this would just be passing our cost along through our fee schedule. The third proposed adjustment is for trap rental. The current trap rental fee is $50. We're recommending that that fee be adjusted to $100 to more closely reflect, again, our cost of purchasing those devices. Depending on the size of the trap, our cost currently is up to $94, I believe, and this is only a deposit. This is a deposit that's placed with the city. When a trap is rented, when the trap is returned, the deposit is fully refundable. And the final recommended amendment includes combining our animal surrender and disposal fees into a single fee, which would include, which would include all of the first three items, surrendering an animal, a litter, or disposing of an animal, as well as the cost, adding the cost for picking up stray cats. And that fee is recommended to be $178. This would not be a fee that we would charge for picking up sick or injured animals. This is, and again, this would reflect our cost of having an animal services officer dispatched to perform this, to perform this service. All of these proposed amendments were discussed with the Finance and Administration Committee on May 24th. So the recommendation this evening is for the city council to first conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution amending and restating the city's user fees and establishing new fees for certain services, which would become effective on August 1st. And with that, myself and Chief and Colleen are available for any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Before I open the public hearing, any quick questions? Jeanie?
Thank you, Bill. Would you go back to the last slide where you had the breakdown of the animal services?
Yes.
So refresh my memory, because I was on that committee, and I honestly can't remember exactly. On the last four parts of that, the owner, starting with the owner surrender fee, so are you saying that those are, there's going to be like one fee that's going to apply to all those situations, and that fee is going to be $178?
That's correct. There would be one fee. The cost for providing that service is the same. We send out an animal services officer to perform any of those functions, and then the animal services officer then has to take the animal up to, I believe, Placer County.
Right.
This is a service that certainly the property, the citizen can perform themselves.
Right.
But for the city to do it, this is what our cost is.
All right, thank you.
So just to follow up on that, and just for clarification, so if I want to give up my cat, and I'd like animal control to take care of that, $178, correct?
If you wanted them to come to your home and pick up your cat, yes.
And if I'm a good citizen, and I have this stray cat that's around, and I go ahead and, you know, take care of it and ask that it come and be picked up, I'm going to pay $178 for that action?
That's correct.
Nobody's going to do that. We know nobody's going to do that. And what are they going to do? They're going to just leave that cat out. That's ridiculous. I mean, even if that is our cost, that's ridiculous, that's never going to happen ever.
Unless it's sick or injured. If it's sick or injured, then...
I understand, but it's just not going to happen.
Do people, is that done a lot? Do people call in, pick up of stray cats? I mean, we have the River City Cat Rescue, there's all these other agencies that are out there attending to stray cat issues, so how often is that actually done?
Yeah, this is only, this only really doesn't apply to stray cats. And we do have other options for us, the River City Rescue is an option, and we certainly will, if somebody does call in, we tell them the options that they have. But stray cats or feral, we just pick it up.
Okay, so the stray cat pickup fee doesn't apply?
If it's a stray cat. If it's an owner surrender, the fee would apply. If it's a stray cat, then we would pick it up, or if it's sick or injured.
Okay, so then I would suggest that we strike the stray cat piece of that if we don't charge anyway.
I would support that.
And I'd rather subsidize that anyway.
Yeah. Because there are, we know that there are so many, there are other options besides picking up a stray cat and driving it all the way up to Auburn to the, you know, animal services facility there.
We can change that.
Yeah, just owner surrender, I think that's appropriate if it's a convenience to the owner and they want to surrender a healthy cat and don't want to take the time to drive up themselves, then let's charge them for our costs. But stray cats, I'd like to see that stricken.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions before we... Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Oh, there we go, haven't used that in a while. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to testify, or any raised hands on Zoom?
I do not have any at this time.
Okay, seen and hearing none, close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
Okay, so I will move that we, where is this thing? That we approve staff's recommendation with the one change that we seem to all have agreed upon regarding stray cats.
I second.
Motion by Bruins, seconded by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Also, haven't done that in a year and a half. Still used to roll call, forgot we're all here.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 11. The subject is amendment to police department budget for fiscal years 21, 22, and 22, 23. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 21, 22, and 22, 23 police department budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Chris Boyd, interim city manager. Just to introduce this item, you know, we've been talking with the council about the American Rescue Act, specifically federal dollars that have been dispersed to cities across the country, and specifically, we've been discussing our allotment. The council's made it clear, as the community and the staff, that in the many components to this federal funding, that public safety, specifically the police department, was the top priority. So our staff has been working very hard to analyze and to understand the federal regulations for the expenditure of these funds, and have now, as our first step in the use of these funds for the police department, has put together a budget amendment recommendation for you. So I do want to thank Bill Zanonian and his entire finance team for the, you know, very diligent work on this and the time that it's taken to be able to understand and put this together. So restoring most of the positions in the police department is, really underscores the intent of this amendment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bill to walk you through it.
Good evening. As the city manager just said, the American Rescue Plan Act, which was signed into law back in March, will provide one-time funding to the city of about $15.6 million. We've already received half of that money last month, and will receive the second half in May of 2022. City council received an update on the American Rescue Plan Act preliminary funding guidelines at your last council meeting on June 10th. At that meeting, we explained that while the final guidelines for expenditure of these funds are still being developed, and there still are a lot of questions to be answered, one eligible expenditure category is that of rehiring public sector staff up to pre-pandemic levels. So for our city, the city's general fund budget for the next two fiscal years currently includes 28 unfunded vacant positions in the police department. Of those 28 unfunded vacant positions, 22 were filled in as of January 2020, just prior to the COVID pandemic, and are therefore, we believe, eligible for funding with American Rescue Plan Act funds. So given that fact and the discussions that we've had at your last meeting, it is staff's recommendation that the city council consider adopting a resolution amending the fiscal year 21, 22, and 22, 23 police department budget by allocating a total of $5,353,210 of American Rescue Plan Act funds. of American Rescue Plan Act funds to refill 22 positions in the city's police department. So this would, would become effective with the 21, 22 budget, which goes into effect next week, actually. Although, as we discussed back on June 10th, it will take probably the next six months to go through the process of filling these 22 positions. And with that, we're open for questions.
Any questions for Bill?
No. Just want to thank you for your diligent work on that, and really happy to see that we're going to be seeing those positions filled.
Okay, well, is there a motion? Sure there is.
I'll move staff's recommendation approving amendments for the fiscal year 2021, 22, and 2022, 23 police department budget.
I second.
Motion by Daniels, seconded by Schaefer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 12. The subject is resolution of intention to renew Sunrise Marketplace Property and Business Improvement District. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution declaring its intention to renew the Sunrise Marketplace Property and Business Improvement District.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and City Council members. Megan Huber, Economic Development and Communications Manager, here tonight with a quick agenda item to begin the process for renewal of our Sunrise Marketplace EBIT for, so I know you are very aware and familiar with our Sunrise Marketplace and the benefits that they provide to our community. For those watching at home, there are some quick Cliff Notes on the screen of who they are and exactly what they do to enhance our community. They serve over 400 businesses within their geography that you can see on the screen and are coming upon their renewal process. The renewal will be for the next three years, and the timeline is as follows. So this evening is a proposed resolution of intention, and then if a resolution is finalized, tomorrow will be a notice and a sending of ballots to property owners for a final vote, with August 12th coming before the city council for a final public hearing and tabulation of ballots. So with that, the staff recommendation is the adoption of a resolution of intention to renew the Sunrise Marketplace Property Business Improvement District, and I will open it up for any questions.
Any questions, comments, motions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of intention to renew the Sunrise Marketplace Property and Business Improvement District.
Second.
Motion by Schaefer, I think Vice Mayor Middleton was close second. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And on we go. Next item, please.
The next item is number 13. The subject is Senate Bill 1, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account Funding and Project List for Fiscal Year 21, 22. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 21, 22 project list to be funded by Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Good evening, Council. Regina Cave, Operations Manager in the General Services Department. This item here before you this evening is an annual exercise that all agencies that are recipients of the Senate Bill 1 RMRA funds are required to do. We are required to submit a bill for, or a resolution approved by council as a form of transparency through the California Transportation Commission. It is not something that they have to approve, however, it just needs to demonstrate consistency with the intent of SB 1 funds. The resolution that we have attached here, too, recommends that for the funds that we are to receive in 2021, 2022, estimated at $1,505,000, be programmed for the Sacramento County Shared Paving Project that we have going on right now, which is up on Kenneth Avenue, as well as a portion of Madison Avenue. And that shared agreement was approved by council in 2020. Originally, it was intended to commence construction in 2020, however, those efforts were delayed, and that is currently under construction. And then we also have our Greenback Lane Complete Streets, which is Sunrise Boulevard to Fair Oaks. Staff expects that that project will be constructed in the spring. The reason we are only identifying these two projects at this point is we have, between these two variables of these two projects listed, as well as our current overlay project that we have, that council awarded a couple of weeks ago and that we are set to construct in two weeks, we need to be able to determine what the cash balance will be of our RMRA funds after the county shared project is done and after we advertise and award the Greenback Project. And so that, therefore, we are recommending that council approve the attached resolution authorizing these two projects be approved for our 2021, 2022 funding, with the caveat that staff does expect to come back to council in the late winter, early spring, as soon as we advertise and award the Greenback Lane Project, to make amendment, not required by CTC with this resolution, but for sake of transparency, to add on additional streets once we have an idea of what our remaining cash balance will be.
Thank you, Regina. Any questions?
So I move staff's, excuse me, recommendation for the resolution of the city of Citrus Heights to approve the fiscal year 21, 22 project list as to be funded by SB 1.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, seconded by Daniels. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cave.
The next item is number 14. The subject is Measure A, Approval of Decennial Review Expenditure Plan Amendments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Sacramento Transportation Authority Decennial Review Amendments.
Regina, again, this item before you is, again, not a requirement of the STA, but for the purpose of educating the public and for transparency. Staff felt it would be appropriate to go before the council for recommendation of approval. Citrus Heights, along with all the other cities within the jurisdiction of Sacramento County or within the area of Sacramento County, including the county of Sacramento, we are all recipients of Measure A funds. Measure A is a half-cent sales tax that is imposed throughout the region for the purposes of transportation improvements, and is distributed to each of the jurisdictions by formula of maintained mileage and population, 75% population and 25% maintained mileage. So the existing Measure A was enacted in 2009 as an extension, and as part of the ordinance governing Measure A, it is required that every 10 years, a decennial review be conducted, and it's to provide, again, not only transparency to the public, but make sure that the goals and objectives and the principles of the Measure A align with all of our regional transportation needs. And so we also need to reflect upon how much revenues are actually being generated throughout the region, and can they support the expenditure plan that was voted on and approved by the voters back in 2004. So in 2019, the STA initiated a review with the professional advisory group. However, in 2020, those efforts were temporarily halted in anticipation of additional tax measure, following Sacramento County Transportation Board decision last summer to halt their efforts on an additional tax measure. In November, we commenced with review of the expenditure plan. And so this last fall, in early in 2021, staff representatives from all of the jurisdictions came together to review the expenditure plan, to identify any additional principles that we needed to include in the report and moving forward for the next 20 years of the measure. And so the item for council is to approve STA's decennial report and their expenditure plan amendments.
Okay, any questions?
Lot of information.
Is this informational?
No, it's actually not informational. We would like to act on this.
I was distracted, Ms. Hurje. Motion, anyone?
I move staff's recommendation to approve the decennial review expenditure plan of STA.
Second. It's a motion by Bruins, seconded by Miller. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
The next item is number 15. The subject is Urgency Ordinance, Fireworks Regulation and Enforcement. The recommendation is to adopt an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 38 of the Citrus Heights Code relating to fireworks. And just as a reminder, I do have some speaker cards for this item.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, before Lieutenant Garing begins here, I just want to remind the council that this item was requested by city council for the police department and the city attorney's office to look into creating options for an emergency ordinance regarding fireworks specific to a social host element, which will be explained, as well as a time parameter, time of day parameter, which will also be explained. And I want to thank Commander Russo and Lieutenant Garing and our city attorney, Ryan Jones, for their hard work in the very short period of time to put this together. I also want to kind of manage expectations a little bit. This is definitely a step in the right direction in giving us the tools that we need to help reduce illegal fireworks and late time, late night fireworks. But enforcement of illegal fireworks and hours of day are extremely challenging just to be able to find who's setting them off. So the enforcement piece will continue to be a struggle for us, but this is definitely a step in the right direction. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Garing, who will give the presentation.
So, good evening, Mayor Miller, Vice Mayor Middleton, and members of the city council. My name is Nikki Garing, and I'm a police lieutenant with your police department, and we are recommending an urgency addition to our current fireworks ordinance, as requested during the June 10th city council meeting. The additions would include a social host ordinance and a change in times of use for legal or safe and sane fireworks. First, I'm going to address the social host ordinance addition. The social host ordinance is intended to target illegal use of fireworks as it pertains to the host. As we all know, dry, hot weather causes many safety concerns pertaining to fireworks, and it is difficult for officers to identify individuals who light off fireworks illegally. As a result, a social host ordinance targets enforcement towards the host. UAS, or officers, will on view the location in this case, otherwise known as the owner or the person who has the right to use or occupy the property under a formal agreement and can be held liable for wrongful act regardless of the person's knowledge. Hosting illegal fireworks could end up in fines of $750 for the first offense, and a subsequent offense could cost $1,000. Cost recovery for subsequent responses or emergency responses can also be incurred. In addition to the social host ordinance, it is recommend, it is the recommendation to add times of use into our current ordinance. Currently, we have no listed times of use, but believe that times of use should start on June 28th from noon to 11:00 p.m., and then June 29th through July 5th between 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. These times are consistent with our neighboring agency of Sacramento. If the urgency ordinance is approved, we plan on advertising our social media, provide literature to the local fireworks stands, and put out a media release as well. At this point, I'm going to turn this presentation over to our city attorney, Ryan Jones.
Thank you, Lieutenant Garing. It's been a pleasure working with you and Commander Russo on this over the past week or so. So the couple things that I wanted to highlight with me comes to the process and parameters of an urgency ordinance. First off, we have to have an urgency to do it. I think we have that in light of a couple factors. One is the dry conditions. The drought certainly makes things more dangerous with if illegal fireworks are launched, and also there has been an increase in illegal fireworks in the Sacramento County region. So I think those factors, including the holiday coming up, it does, the urgency level. The urgency ordinance, which takes a second reading and then a 30-day period before they are approved. But this, this will become effect now, but it does require a four-fifths vote of the council, so we need four out of five, if not a unanimous vote, to approve it tonight. And it is only valid for 45 days at this point, but could go on for up to two years if the council wanted to extend that. The recommended action is, it's up to the council's approval, but if you want to do that, we would say, we'd ask you to approve a motion tonight to adopt the urgency ordinance and ask that it be read by title only. If there's any questions for myself or Lieutenant Garing, we're happy to answer them now.
Questions for, time question? Lieutenant Garing? Or Ryan?
So, thank you very much for working so hard on this. I do, I have a question. How does this affect a, a large apartment complex owners?
Yeah, so both the owner and the renter are potentially liable. I think the focus would be on the renter, but the, the owner of the apartment complex could be cited as well.
So what if there's a very large one, and there's, there's multiple people shooting off illegal fireworks, say, multiple times in a night, in a single night on 4th of July? How does that, how is that handled?
Well, enforcement's always a difficult part, but they are subject to multiple citations. If there were, you know, 10 violations at one site, you would have 10 citations that are potentially levied on that party.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, just a second, Jeannie. I wondered about that, too, like a renter of a house, does this put the landlord in jeopardy? Because that's something that I just couldn't see. I, I think the renter should be responsible for the, for the guests at their house.
So the goal is, the goal is to target the host, so if the renter is there and they are, are allowing that to occur, in the ordinance, it states that. But yes, the homeowner can also be held liable as well.
Sure, okay.
A homeowner that isn't there, that doesn't live there?
That's correct.
Oh, I won't support that. Not at all.
Well, we can talk about it.
Well, looking at the, oop, wrong ordinance, wrong resolution. When I read the ordinance, I read that it would be the person who basically is occupying the premises.
Yeah.
That's, and it was really clear that that would be, I'll have to go look at it again, but, and that makes sense to me, because they're the ones that threw the party or allowed it to happen. So, let's see, owner of any, the host is an owner of any private residential or non-residential realty, or, okay, does state an owner of any private residential or non-residential real property in the city. So I think that we need to maybe take a look at that, but any person who has the right to use, possess, or occupy the property under a lease, permit, license, rental agreement, or contract. And then it goes on to say supervises a party and so forth. So I think we have to have a little leeway to the off, off-site owner who may not be aware. Maybe we have a slight alter, alteration to this, that they be notified, and then if it happens again, that they, that they could be subject to a fine. What do you, how does that? I agree with that.
So, so I, I have a similar situation, and it's not regarding this particular, so I have a friend who lives in an HOA, and there's, there's a very significant parking restrictions. So this particular property is rented, so the HOA will, if the person is parked in the driveway, they fine the homeowner, and the homeowner passes that fine along to the renter.
Oh, there you go. So that is kind of a quasi solution.
It really does, I think that there is some built-in resolution for those folks that don't, you know, live there, and they rent the property, they can pass the fine along to that person that's renting, and then they're responsible for it.
That's a good point.
So, and, and is my understanding that if somebody wants to defend, they, this is the forum where they come and make their case? Is that, that correct? Is that, is it, do they make their case to the city council that, hey, it wasn't me, or?
Well, ultimately, but I think they go through the police department first.
Absolutely. They got to go through the police department and appeal this. But if they're making an appeal, who do they appeal to? But if they're making an appeal, who do they appeal to?
Okay.
Appeal goes to the Police Department first. Sorry, Chief, would you like to speak to this?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, the appeal process goes through the Police Department first, and then it can end up at City Council.
Well, with that, that explanation, then I'm fine with leaving it as-is. I did want to add one thing, though, if I may. I was thinking about this the other night and ran this by our City Attorney and City Manager. And what I'd really like to do is make it mandatory that they, that the nonprofits that are running the fireworks booth post our new ordinance at the window, stating that, so that people have every opportunity to know what the new ordinance is and to do the right thing, so.
Because the hours are not only applying to illegal, they're applying to safe and sane.
And so-
Illegal, yeah.
So anyway, I just typed it up so I could pass it out to you before you agreed to add it in or not to add it in, so you could see what it said.
A great idea, Jeannie. Thank you.
And that way, we, and I was really pleased to hear Lieutenant Garing talk about the other actions we were already prepared to take to get out on social media and get out to the public. And I would suggest we also do a, a public announcement to the, well, the Sentinel's probably picking this meeting up, but to the Sentinel or the Messenger and make sure that every opportunity to inform the public is done, because we're only, what, four days away from the opening of sales for fireworks? And you know they're going to start going off right away. And there are, you know, leftovers are already being discharged from last year. So, so I'd like to see that as being added into the ordinance. And I'll give you a copy, Amy, as well. You've seen it in email format, so. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yes.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Yeah, my comment would just go back to the host. And it just seems like we're going to really complicate things, you know, with fining a person who is not there, who has, you know, no way to know that that's going on, and a homeowner who has a renter. And even going through that process of now we're going to send a notification to him. He's going to be fined. They have to pay the fine. They have to go through that process. You know, the tenant's probably going to deny it, "It wasn't me." And we're just looking, I think, at a really complicated process where we shouldn't be focusing, I think, directly on the person that we believe committed the offense.
Well, that's-
It's like, we don't write tickets to the car owner when their kid runs a red light. So I think if we have that person right there and we suspect that's the person, that's who should be getting the fine. And, you know, as a prior landlord, I can't imagine, you know, just, again, getting this notification and then all the hoops that are going to be jumped, you're going to have to jump through. And you just know, again, the tenant's going to deny it. It's going to deny it. "Why, I'm not going to pay you. I, it wasn't me," you know? And then here comes the owner.
If I might address that briefly, I understand what you're saying, and I completely understand the concern that you have. In the rare circumstances that that would be the scenario, first of all, our officers have the discretion to make those decisions in the field. But secondarily, this is an administrative site for, through our municipal code and the Police Department in weighing these out if somebody did appeal it. We certainly use a lot of discretion and fairness and balance in trying to make sure we do the right things here. But where this would be practical for us is on those problem homes that we have year after year after year. And we have them. We have these same homes that are notorious for setting off fireworks, illegal fireworks. And we try to catch them, we try to visit them. And if that happens to be a rental, this would give us the tool to now contact the landlord and explain, "You have a problem home. You have a problem renter that we respond to year after year after year, and we need your help with this problem." And this would give us the tools that we need to get the landlord's attention that really doesn't want to deal with the problem. But again, I think this is, that would be a rare set of circumstances, but certainly plausible.
And if I could, let me, the chief had to say, but the due process. I checked Section thirty-eight dash eighty-two with regard to the appeal. It first does go to the Police Department, then it goes to a hearing officer, which could then be appealed to the City Council. So there's actually three potential layers of somebody stepping in to do the reasonable thing, which includes your body in the end, the five of you.
Yeah, I think the elements are all there for-
I agree.
For protecting the landlord. But appreciate your thoughts on that, Brett, because I can understand how shocking it would be to get that kind of notice if it was, if it was just dictated, you know, you have to pay this. So, thank you, Chief, for your explanation of how, you know, it would practically work. With that in mind, I'd like to move that we approve this emergency-
Councilmembers, we did have some public comment on-
Oh, I forgot about that.
So we had our first public comment is Arthur Ketterling.
Arthur, come on up.
It's been a long time since we've seen you, Arthur.
Yes, it's been a while. Yes, I'm Arthur Ketterling, and I am for support for the time limit of, for, for the fireworks and all with, with things of going on all the time. And even before it's time to even do fireworks, that as, like one of the, as one of you just stated, that, that there's people that even do fireworks even before, right at, right at the time, that they, they can do it. Even before they are supposed to, they do it. And they should be fined if they do it illegally, too, as well. And I hope that you've put a time limit on, on the fireworks. And I hope it's year after year. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur.
And I do have one additional public comment through Zoom from David Warren. And you can now unmute yourself to speak.
Yes, my name's David Warren. I would like to dissent as to several comments that were made. As I'm sitting in my home right now, I'm hearing the M-80s going off at the apartment complex near the intersection of San Tomas and Crosswood Circle. If the landowner is not held liable, he has no incentive to control the tenants. The only incentive will be if they face a fine, so that they will put security people on their property to make sure people do not discharge their fireworks. People who have problem tenants will only be interested in controlling them if they face a fine. Passing it on to the tenant is not necessarily possible unless the lease that the tenants have has that provision in it. Wherefore, it's important that the landlord be held responsible to put in their safeguards by policing their tenants. I think that, I'm also concerned about the definition found in Section thirty-eight dash seventy-eight as the term knowingly. It is so subjective that it is, I believe, to be statutorily unconstitutional. How is any, how is any individual going to be able to prove that a landlord ever knew that the person that was discharging the fireworks was discharging them? It's a constitutional impossibility. It's completely subjective. Therefore, it's annulity. It also invites allegations of discrimination as to who knowingly does it and who doesn't. I think the better solution to solving the fireworks problem is by putting more reserve officers on the street on July fourth to make sure that once a police officer comes by and stops the fireworks, there will be someone there to follow up and make sure the people who are discharging them stop them. It's a basic rule of military practice. If you take land, unless you continue to occupy it and secure it, the enemy's going to take it over. I hear, I just heard another M-80 go off. My, I live near the library. That area is constantly used by the people discharging fireworks. They don't need to do it on the apartment grounds. They do it on public property. Even, the park district is exempt from any sanction, and that's why people are going to go there. Wherefore, this statutory change is not going to solve the problem, at least in my area, because they'll keep doing it on public property with no restrictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Well, I do like the fact that Chief Lawrence did, did state at the beginning, "This is not going to solve all the issues we have." It is a good first step. I thank you, Chief, for managing our expectations. I hope this keeps it down to a dull roar and that folks are considerate. You know, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, all the campgrounds are sold out. I think I'm just going to have to be home with my dogs, and that's always a very stressful night for them. And I can't even imagine a vet. I know, growing up, we had one of our neighbors from Vietnam, and every Fourth of July, he just shook underneath his bed back in the day. And they were, they were bigger than M-80s, I think, they were setting off then. But again, I have received, and I think we all have, an extraordinary amount of correspondence from our citizens supporting our efforts. And let's not stop here. Let's continue refining it. And, you know, there's always issues, as Mr. Warren points out, and we'll, we'll deal with those. Again, I'm just going to promise there'll be a few problems come July fourth.
We now have new tools.
Now we have new tools. And especially the aerial devices, because that'll, I believe, help our officers identify which property they're coming from. Because that's, just like before, seeing who did it was always a challenge. And now it's going to be a challenge, you know, what if it's in the middle of the street? It's not a perfect ordinance, but it matches our surrounding communities with ours, and it's, and it's a good start as we try and handle this situation of illegal fireworks. So with that-
I have a question.
Yes.
This is for the chief. I know this came up before on the tenth. So I have the Nail'em app on my phone, and I can make reports real-time. Is our Police Department receiving the Nail'em app reporting information real-time?
I'm unfamiliar with that. Lieutenant Garing, perhaps, do you have any answer for that?
What we're putting into place this year is something similar to that. And that is residents can go onto our social media, actually our website, and have a direct reporting to the officers that are on the streets right there. So the officers that we have employed for the Fourth of July are strictly fireworks patrol officers. And they will be receiving an email to their department email, which comes to their phone. And then they can dispatch themselves directly. So that, the hope is to enable people to just make that report quickly, as well as free up some of our dispatch lines for other emergencies for the officers that are assigned to working your standard calls for service.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And I think that's something worth looking into.
Never heard of it.
But for now, it sounds like we have a plan. And with that.
Then, if we have no other questions, I would move staff's recommendation for approval of an urgency ordinance amending Chapter eighteen of the Citrus Heights Code relating to fireworks.
Thirty-eight.
Lieutenant, did you want to add the language that you said about posting the notice?
Sure, including mandatory posting at windows of, at fireworks booths of the notice that I distributed to the council members, which references the ordinance and, and highlights the, the fact that it's illegal to discharge any fireworks between eleven P.M. and nine A.M., including safe and sane fireworks. And the liability for the discharge of illegal fireworks on a host's private property at any time should fall to the host, as well as the person discharging the illegal fireworks. And then it goes on to explain, unless the host initiates contact with law enforcement or fire officials prior to another person notifying law enforcement or fire officials of the violation, which is stated in the resolution.
Mayor, pardon me, I just have one more question.
Sure.
Lieutenant Garing. Lieutenant Garing, this is Councilmember Tim Schaefer. Are, are we employing all of our reserve officers for the Fourth of July?
Sir, we have, we have two separate two-man units going out specifically for fireworks. And then we have a third unit that will be a UAS unit that will have a UAS operator and a observer. So that's what we're employing on the fourth, the third and the fourth, to hopefully combat the problem.
Thank you.
I would second the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion by Bruins, seconded by Daniels. All those in favor? Oh, this is a four-fifth. Let me call the roll just to be-
Yeah, great.
Be official on this one.
Why can't Amy?
Amy, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Aye.
I want to thank all the members of the public who took the time to write to us. I would say we had a hundred percent support on this. And it made me pause to think, why hadn't we done this years earlier?
I know.
But we're doing it now, and that's what's important, so.
Okay, the next item, sixteen, we already discussed. The next item is Department Reports, number seventeen. The subject is Permit-Ready Accessory Dwelling Unit Program by the Community Development Department.
And Allison's been waiting on their wings for a while now. Welcome.
Yes, I have. I'm happy to be here before you tonight. I'm Allison Bermudez with the Planning Division. I presented this program a couple of months ago when it was preliminary and not officially released. But I'm here to announce that we have officially released our Permit-Ready Accessory Dwelling Unit Program as, we're acronyming as PRODU. So just a little bit about accessory dwelling units, and that's what we're referring to in this program, how they're these independent living units that are placed on existing properties where a residential home already exists. So we create a second unit on an existing property. And ADUs have been increasing in popularity over the past couple of years as a way to increase affordable housing. They're considered affordable housing to provide multi-generational living units. Sorry, I got to share my screen. Thank you. And they provide more independent living spaces for families and additional living space without acquiring land. And just some highlights over the ADU programs. We have had ADU permits, you know, they've been around for quite a long time, called granny flats, accessory dwelling units, second units. But in two thousand seventeen, when the legislation amended several regulations and the city also relaxed our requirements, the increase in the number of permits issued for them really has been extraordinary. So since two thousand seventeen, when the new regulations came into place, we've issued thirty-two permits for ADUs, and ten of them actually have been just in two thousand twenty-one. So each year, the increase has steadily been rising. And so with the popularity of accessory dwelling units, the PRODU program was developed. And this is a permit-ready program, so people can construct an ADU on their property through the use of these plans that have been pre-designed and pre-developed and also pre-approved by our Building Division, so they're kind of off-the-shelf program. There is three different models. We have a four hundred ninety-six square foot model, a five hundred ninety-nine square foot model, and a seven hundred forty-nine square foot model. Each unit is available with different roof lines, but they all have the same floor plan. And I'll show you those plans, so you can see how just changing the exterior materials and the roof line changes the look of the unit. So ultimately, we end up having thirteen different designs that are available. Each unit also is designed with interior thought for accessibility, so a little bit wider hallways and doorways for those that may have challenges as they age. The benefit of the program is saving the homeowners, obviously, the fees. Some of the scariest parts that people have questions about is who am I going to get to prepare my plans? What do I make the unit look like? What do I make the unit look like? And for those that are inexperienced in that industry, that's a very scary and fearful part of designing an ADU. So with the use of these plans, they don't have to do that. They can choose one of these. So they're saving hiring and selecting a draft person or an architect. These plans will also save about $1,000 to $1,300 in plan check fees. So they still have the building permit fee to pay, but they don't have to pay the plan review fee. So that's a significant savings if you add that on top of not having to hire an architect. Also, all these models do qualify for the state exemptions, which are related to impact fees. So as you know, when people build a residence, there's a variety of impact fees that are collected for roads and transportation, schools, drainage, and things like that. And so the state put exemptions in place, actually into the law, and all these units in our program do qualify for those exemptions. So they're saving, right off the bat, by using these, are saving $2,609 in not paying those fees, and that doesn't include the school fee that they would also have to pay. And then, obviously, this is going to create a shorter time, so if you're in need of an accessory dwelling unit, your time is considerably reduced from planning to construction, because you don't have to go through the design process, the plan review process. So that's kind of invaluable time. So this is kind of the steps, if you're going to construct a residential unit, you evaluate your site, determine what kind of space you have, what conflicts are maybe on your property, or, you know, the best fit. Then you start your pre-designed work, your design work, your project will go through plan review, you get your permit, you start construction, and then you move in. As you can see, by using this permit-ready program, you're basically wiping out three steps right out of the middle. You don't have to worry about the pre-designed work, it's been done, the design work's been done, and the plan review's already been done. So you can evaluate your site, determine which unit fits, prepare your site plan, submit it to us, get your permit, and you're off to construction. So it's a great, it's a great program, and I'm very happy the city has implemented this, and hopefully our community will take advantage of it. I'll brief the plans real quickly here. As you can see, this is one of the 496-square-foot models. These have this, the typical, you know, roof on them, but varying exterior materials. So each unit really having its own distinct look, but it's the same plan set and the same floor plan. And this one's basically the same thing as well, but you see the roof design has changed, added the shed roof, adding some more windows to it, giving more light into the unit. So the same footprint, but different exterior materials and different roof line, presenting a different project. And then you move into a little bit larger unit, this one having the two-roof system with the porch cover, one with siding, one with stucco. Same floor plan, but going to the typical, just California-type roof. And then this one adding the different roof style and materials to this one, all the same floor plan with different materials and roof line to hopefully blend into anyone's property. Move into the larger unit, this is the two-bedroom, one-bath unit, different roof lines again, with different exterior materials. And then the more shed-type roof on this, to allow more light in and more windows up So we've done quite an extensive, and still working on some extensive outreach to create the interest and let the community know that these plans are now available. So we are hosting a webinar next Tuesday, June 29th, at 6:00 PM. So if you've reached it, and if you speak to any groups in your next travels in the next few days, it'd be great if you could mention this. This will be a webinar, so they can watch it live and ask questions. It will also be recorded, so they can watch it later, but I do encourage people to sign up. That way, they get into the queue, and then they can, they'll receive the recording after it's done. So if they're not watching it live, they'll get a direct link to re-watch it. And you can sign up for that on the city's website at citrusheights.net/ADUCentral. This webinar will not only cover the Permit-Ready program, but it'll talk about ADUs in general. Another, a marketing material that we have available on the city's website, we developed this Homeowners' Planning Guide, which really goes through all the steps and provides some great details for those considering an ADU. So not only does it talk about the regulations of ADUs and shows examples of the plans if they want to use the Permit-Ready, but it does provide them a lot of information on selecting a contractor, establishing a budget, and other considerations that sometimes get overlooked. So it really does help them start to plan and work through it, because we don't want anyone to get overwhelmed by the project or get involved in the project and then hit a roadblock. So it really is a great guide and is available for download on the city's website. We also created a couple videos that are ready to be seen on the website, one about the Permit-Ready Accessory Dwelling Units, and then a general FAQ video for anyone interested in doing an ADU. And the Permit-Ready video is actually going to be replay, going to be played on Metro Cable Channel 14, as they have time, as a community resource. So if you're flipping channels and you come across Channel 14, you may see that video And I just wanted to thank those that have helped with this program. The funding for this program did come from the state of California through the LEED grant that we received, that helped us establish this program, have the plans designed, create the videos. So all the funding for this program came through that grant. Jackson and Sands Engineering is the firm that we selected to prepare the plans and have been a great partner. Greg Anderson, our chief building official, really has been extraordinarily helpful to me, has listened to all my hundreds of questions that I have asked him over the course of the past few months, creating this program and helping educate the public on it. And then, of course, Nicole Baxter and all her great team for helping create all the materials and the videos. So it's really been a team effort. So if you don't mind, I would like to show you one of the videos. It's just a couple minutes long, but I think it shows a great resource, and I want people to know that it's available. So I'm going to stop sharing and let my video person, Haley, bring up the video and see if it'll play.
There is such a need for more housing in the state of California, and especially in our community that's already so built out. And one of the programs we have coming forward this year is our Accessory Dwelling Unit Program, where our community can acquire pre-approved plans from us to build an ADU on their property.
So an ADU, also known as an accessory dwelling unit, granny unit, backyard cottage, goes by all sorts of different names. There's different types of ADUs. The ones that we worked with the City of Citrus Heights on are detached, newly constructed. The plans we designed for the city incorporate a lot of different options to make them compatible with the neighborhoods found within Citrus Heights. These designs were completed in accordance with the California Building Code and Residential Code. These are up to date, they meet all the current standards. With the plans being pre-approved through Citrus Heights, you knock out a lot of that design work and having to select an engineer, architect, designer. These plans are already completed and ready for you to pick one that best suits your property.
I've been employed with Citrus Heights for 20 years and been reviewing these type of projects the whole time, and I can say without a doubt that this program and these plans with the different models and the options are going to be a great benefit for Citrus Heights. We do understand that there is a need, and we are seeing a big interest in ADUs. We have for the last couple of years. People are bringing in their parents or extended family, and some people are utilizing them as rentals, so it's a win-win.
Just about three and a half weeks ago, we bought our house here and got to move in to our first home. We love Citrus Heights because we're close enough to everything, but we're far enough out that it's quiet and we have space. We love the idea of having more people here, but still feeling really independent. That means that, for now, my sibling can live with us, but down the road, if we want to, it can be our parents as they get older, or it can be a rental unit, and it can help bring in money for us. We've been considering an ADU for a while. Having plans pre-designed would be a huge deal for us, not just because of the financial savings, but also because it's such an overwhelming process, and to know that there's something that will be easy to get approved by the city and to start building as soon as we're able to is just really exciting for us, and it's nice to be able to see beforehand what it might look like, rather than hoping we get a result that we'll like.
I really feel strongly about accessory dwelling units being an important part of our community. We really are an area that can offer new growth. We have a lot of new people looking to come to Citrus Heights, as well as the families that already live in those areas are able to remain and stay here and add an ADU. So lots of opportunities for our solid roots and our new growth.
Check with Citrus Heights and find out if your property is eligible and one of these designs can fit on your property.
Very nice, Ms. Bermudas.
Very well done.
Very well done.
That's all, thank you.
With that...
I'm sorry, is she still there?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Just real quick, I just want to comment on your presentation, how wonderful it is, because this is how government should work. This is how we're saving people time, we're saving people money, and it's just a wonderful thing to see, and so I really appreciate the work that's been done on this, it's tremendous. I talked to a guy that has a company that builds ADUs over the last week, and he wasn't aware of this plan or this program that we have, and so I gave him some information to reach out to the city. But my question is, there's a certain amount of plans here, but that company, they have their own design, their own build, the way, you know, they have a set of certain dwellings that they create. Does this allow for additional plans to be brought in and maybe go through the same process to get them approved by the city, so that they can offer the same kind of savings to customers?
This program we're in right now does not. We have used all of our funding through this grant, but as this industry and this area and interest has grown, we continually seek additional funding for that. So it's something we would be interested in. I think there's some different models that we would like to have, maybe a true studio unit, or an interest in some larger units. So I do hope that we do have that opportunity to come as more grant funding becomes available.
Yeah, you know, this is, this is the future, no doubt about it. This is big, I think, in the future, and I don't know why we would have to necessarily wait for a grant program, other than, you know, we're always looking for money for something. But I would just highly encourage us to find ways to expand the program and to extend, expand the number of plans that are available to folks.
And, real quick, Allison, the, I don't want to gloss over the preparation of the site plans, because it's very nice to have the pre-approved plans for the building, but all of our properties are different, including connections to the sewer, water, and electricity. Can you briefly, I know it's getting late touch on those requirements?
Sure. So that is an important step, and that planning guide that I mentioned goes into great detail about that.
Okay.
And so that is the key piece, is establishing that good site plan, determining the area that you have, investigating the easements that might be on your property, any utility hookups that you may need to do. Generally, most properties here are going to be able to accommodate the extra sewer and water service, so they just would tie into what's existing, so that saves money. But that is just something they have to kind of do their due diligence on to check.
Right.
So that site plan is what the key piece is, that would come in with the application, then, when they are preparing to do these, this style of a unit.
Yeah, it's just a site adapt of a standard building. That's great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is that all the questions? Then with that, we can move on to the next item, please.
The next item was City Manager Items.
Yes, Council, briefly, I just wanted to share that the City of Citrus Heights and Sutter Health are partnering to host a free Pfizer vaccine clinic this Saturday, June 26th, from 10:00 to 1:00 at our community center. The clinic's open to anyone ages 12 and older. Lock-ins are welcome. There's information on our website, citrusheights.net. I really want to give a big thanks to, you know, all those who helped spread the word about this clinic, but really, it's Vice Mayor Middleton who's really drove and has led this program, and really has led the way on the communication piece, along with our staff, so much so, she's, the vice mayor has secured SAC Republic tickets for the first 100 attendees. I really want to thank her and everyone working on this program. Thank you.
Can you get re-marks, Amy?
I don't think that's recommended.
Thanks, Chris.
Next item is Items Requested by Councilmembers or Future Agenda Items.
Anything?
Real quick.
Ms. Bruins, then, Schaefer?
First of all, I just was remiss in not saying this earlier. I just want to applaud and acknowledge our police department for a very successful conclusion to a potentially very deadly incident at the Heritage Meadows Apartments earlier today. Was it today or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, where they were able to help a man who was determined to commit suicide by cop, basically, and they were able to talk him down after eight hours of him being tied up in his, in his own home, and bring this to a successful conclusion, where he was able to get the services that he needs. So I just thank you all for your participation in that. And then, just I wanted to circle back to Mr. Warren's public comment on the cooling centers and recommending they be at Rush Park, which we all know is not a city facility, but he makes a good point as far as transportation to get there. Have we ever had any conversations with the park director regarding opening that facility up for cooling center as well?
Not to my knowledge, but we certainly can. I mean, it's a, it's a good idea. I mean, our facility has never, never had many people take its up on it. We've had very few during this last heat wave, so that is a good option. The bus accessibility is a good point. The truth is, I think most people go to the mall in our community, but Rush Park is, is something we can look into.
That's true. There's a lot of transportation to the mall, too, so, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I also don't know if they have open swim there, you know? That's a great way to cool off.
At the mall.
No, not the mall, at the park. The park has a pool. Mr. Schaefer?
So I'd just like to find a way, and hopefully you guys can figure out a way to do this. Alfred Sanchez has done, has continued to do just an amazing job in, in helping to manage our unhoused community, and he had a great meeting this week with, with the director of the library system and Dave Mitchell, and I'd like to find a way to acknowledge him and recognize him as a community budsman for Citrus Heights. So can I get a second for this?
I can make that happen.
Okay, great.
I can make that happen.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll work something out.
Yes.
That's a good idea for snack man.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Is there anything else on our agenda? Then we are adjourned.